Good evening and welcome to the December 12th, 2022 Public Hearing of the Planning Commission on the City of Plant City Comprehensive Plan Amendments. We thank you for attending this meeting. Your comments and participation are encouraged. For those attending in person and wishing to speak on any agenda item, please sign, please sign in, please sign the register at the rear of the room and turn off any devices that may be a distraction. To minimize feedback in the audio, all online participants in the meeting will be muted until it is their opportunity to speak. Planning Commissioners should unmute themselves to indicate that they would like to speak. Please be sure to state your name at the beginning of your remarks for the benefit of the clerk. There will be an opportunity for members of the public to provide comments. When your name is called, you will be unmuted when it is your turn to speak. Please wait until the chair calls on you to begin speaking. State your name at the beginning of your comments and adhere to the time limits. If anyone has difficulties or is watching via HTV and would like to provide comments to be included in the record for local government hearing, please email them to planner@plancom.org. That's planner@plancom.org. For those of you who are not familiar with our process, the meeting will be conducted as follows. The agenda item will be introduced. Staff will give their presentation with a 15-minute time limit. The applicant will be given the opportunity to make a presentation with a 15-minute time limit. Following presentations, members of the public may address the Planning Commission when recognized by the chairman. Public comment will be heard for three minutes per person. The applicant will be afforded a three-minute period for rebuttal response. Planning Commissioners will then ask questions. Public comment will be closed. Then upon a motion, a second and discussion, a vote will be taken. Then introduction, I'll ask the clerk to go ahead and call roll, please.
Good evening. Bernstein?
Here.
Bowden?
Yeah.
Buzzer?
Here.
Cardenas?
Here.
Fernandez?
Here.
Handy? Commissioner Handy? Chris?
Here.
Lauk?
Here.
Soria?
Here.
Orton?
Here.
Rodriguez?
Here.
Chair Joseph?
Here.
Thank you. You have a quorum, sir.
Thank you. All right, our first item of business is 2A, PCCPA 22-11, Future Land Use Map Amendment, and the presenter is Mark Hudson.
Good evening, Mark Hudson, Planning Commission staff. We've been processing five plan amendments for the City of Plant City this cycle. Since the initiation date, one has been withdrawn and another has been continued to the next cycle, so we have three remaining to present to you. The plan amendment, as the chairman already noted, is PCCPA 22-11. It is located in the northeast quadrant of Plant City. It's indicated by the yellow star on their vision map, as you can see here, relatively close to the major commercial activity center of Park Road and I-4. More specifically, it's located at north of North Frontage Road, east of North Wilder Road, south of Mayday Drive, and west of Charlie Taylor Road. This is an aerial of the site. You can see the area affected is surrounded by the lavender dashed line. It's comprised of only a half an acre. It runs directly on the north Frontage Road. It's next to an agricultural use, you can see, that is to the east. To the north, the adjacent property has a large intermittent water body on that, so the parcel is rather narrow and doesn't have much opportunity to move further away from this heavily traveled facility of I-4. Little bit of background, it was privately initiated. I already noted it's part of an annexation. It's part of, it's coming in a little bit over half an acre, and being part of an annexation, it currently has its Hillsborough County land use on it of Residential 1, allowing one unit per acre, and the applicant has asked for a Plant City light commercial office. This shows you the land use map as it stands today. You can see to the north, in Plant City, it has a Residential 4 plan category and some areas that have been designated natural preservation, representing that water body. Further to the west is a part of the Commercial Activity Center that is near that Park Road, Interstate 4 interchange. Of course, it butts right on I-4. Lands that have already annexed in but have not gone through the plan amendment process yet to the east and west have that Hillsborough County Residential 1. Those are shown currently as a transitional area. If the plan amendment was adopted by the Plant City Commission, it would change its land use to Plant City light commercial office. This is a typical plan category that we use as transitional areas between residential areas and more general commercial or higher intensity commercial areas. Fits well within that transition from those intense uses to the least intense uses. And I'll give you a little bit idea of the character there and some arrow photographs a little bit later in the presentation. What is its potential if this plan amendment was granted? Currently, one dwelling unit could be built on site. It currently doesn't meet locational criteria, but as part of, if it did, it could, that land use category would allow up to 30,000 square feet of rural-scale neighborhood commercial uses. If it was approved, it would allow up to five dwelling units or about 8,800 square feet of commercial office uses. This is an aerial of the site, a little bit different angle. It shows you that agricultural activity directly to the east, vacant lands to the west and to the north, and you can see it's close proximity to the interstate. There is a billboard on the site currently. This shows you that billboard that I just mentioned, looking at the site from North Frontage Road towards the northwest. This is an adjacent home near the site, however, it is listed by the property appraiser being currently in agricultural use. And this is that warehouse facility that is adjacent to that home and to the east of this site. This shows you looking west on North Frontage Road. Again, you can see the close proximity to the interstate. This is looking east on North Frontage Road. We did review this per the Plant City Conference of Plan to ensure consistency. We looked at policies and objectives related to neighborhood conservation, community development, enhanced hometown charm. Enhanced hometown charm, and that primarily relates to the Northeast Master Plan that we look at. We looked at policies related to annexations and how they're processed for the City of Plant City, growth management, provision of public facilities, and economic growth. The full goals, objectives, and policies are in your packet, but we did feel that this application was consistent with all those provisions. The Plant City Utilities Department says they do have capacity to serve this site. We received no objections from the Environmental Protection Commission or any other adjacent property owner or agency. We are here to garner your recommendation this evening on this plan amendment, and we'll be looking and meeting with the Plant City Planning Board on December 28th. That's 8:30 in the morning at Plant City City Hall. The adoption hearing date is yet to be set. With that, Planning Commission staff recommends that PCCPA 22-11 be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Plant City Conference of Plan and afford this recommendation to the Plant City Commission. I stand for any questions, and the applicants here as well, to provide you commentary and respond to any questions you may have.
All right, thank you. We didn't have anyone, did applicant have a presentation that they wanted to give, or?
Good evening. Phil Waldron, 2736 Golf Lake Drive, Plant City, Florida. We appreciate Mark's comments, and we concur with, and we're here to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We had no one sign up in the public comment for this item, so I will turn it over to Commissioners for questions, comments, discussions on this item. Not seeing any lights, then I will go on ahead and close the public comment on this item and open it up to motions. Commissioner Buzzer?
I'd like to move that we find PCCPA 22-1 consistent with Plant City Comprehensive Plan and recommend to the Plant City Commission.
All right, that's a motion of consistency finding from Commissioner Buzzer. I have a second to that. Motion, Commissioner Soria?
I will second the motion.
All right, we have a second to that consistency motion by Commissioner Soria. Are there any more questions, comments from the Commissioners on this item? Seeing none at this time, I'll ask the clerk to go ahead and do a roll call vote.
Of course. Bernstein?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Buzzer?
Yes.
Cardenas?
Yes.
Fernandez?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Lauk?
Yes.
Soria?
Yes.
Chair Joseph?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried, nine to zero.
Thank you. All right, next item up is 2B, PCCPA 22-12, another future land use map amendment, and back to you, Mr. Hudson.
A little bit quicker that time. Again, Mark Hudson, Planning Commission staff. This next plan amendment actually is within stone, sort of the one you just acted on, so I'll show you the general locations of each when that slide comes up. It's PCCPA 22-11. As you can see from the star on Plant City's vision map, it is also located in northeast quadrant, also near the Commercial Activity Center of Park Road and Interstate 4. More specifically, it's located north of North Frontage Road, east of North Wilder Road, south of Dan Kendrick Road, and west of Charlie Taylor Road. This shows you the site located with the, signified by the dashed lavender line. I'm going to try to use the cursor here. This is the site, if you can see it on your screens, of the previous plan amendment where my cursor is currently. So very close. This is being applied for by the applicant, also owns the property to the south, which he hopes to utilize to allow greater entitlements on the southern property by using this property for support uses such as retention, et cetera. The site is about two-thirds wet, so there are some development limitations on the affected parcel. As you can see, it's next to a neighborhood, I believe the name of the neighborhood is Colonial, Colonial Village, and you can see that it's separated by the North Wilder Road. So let me go on to the next slide. It's been privately initiated. It's a small-scale plan amendment, as the first one, but this one's a bit larger at 9.2 acres. Also has the same land use as the previous one, which is Hillsborough County Residential 1, but in this case, the applicant's request of Plant City Commercial, which is the same plan category directly to the south. This shows you the future land use map as it stands today. You can see that to the south is the commercial property that's already within Plant City with the red color. To the east is Plant City Residential 4 and Natural Preservation, and to the east, that neighborhood is still within unincorporated Hillsborough County and has land use of Residential 2, or two units per acre. This shows you if the Plant City Commission ultimately adopted this plan amendment, it would have the same land use as the property to the south, which is that commercial designation. Currently, the property has the potential for four dwelling units, or 30,000 square feet of rural neighborhood commercial uses. However, it does not currently meet that locational criteria, as far as we understand. If approved, it could theoretically have 29 dwelling units or up to 60,000 square feet of commercial office uses. This shows you the aerial of the site. The red dot shows the affected parcel. This particularly shows you the development of the residence neighborhood directly to the west. Then further west than that is Stingray Chevrolet, which is a large car dealership that's located right on that interchange. This shows you the site looking directly from North Wilder Road, and this is the Colonial Village neighborhood that is being, that is separated from this development by that North Wilder Road roadway. This is looking south on North Wilder Road, towards North Frontage Road, and of course towards Interstate 4. This is looking north on North Wilder Road. We did review this per the Plant City Conference of Plan, particularly again, we looked at neighborhood conservation, community development, how it related to the Northeast Master Plan, issues related to annexations, growth management, provision of public facilities, and economic growth. We did feel it was consistent with the policies that we noted here and that are included in your packet for your review. Though it's our understanding the applicant is not intending to develop this with residential uses, the school district did note that several schools that would serve this area are near our capacity and would need to go through the concurrency management process if that was in fact the case. The water and wastewater services can be met by available utility development, and there has been no objections from any agencies, including the Environmental Protection Commission. The planning, we're here this evening as the last one to garner your recommendation on this plan amendment, and we'll be hearing this again December 28th with the Planning Board at City Hall that morning at 8:30. And again, the adoption date is yet to be set. With that, Planning Commission staff recommends that PCCPA 22-12 be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Plant City Conference of Plan and afford this recommendation to the Plant City Commission. I stand for any questions, and also the applicant is here.
All right, does the applicant have a presentation they wanted to give?
Good evening again. Phil Waldron, 2736 Golf Lake Drive, Plant City. Just a couple of comments. The, we're presently in the process of doing a conceptual modification to the existing zoning to the south. As Mark indicated, we have no plans at all to increase the density or the intensity of the uses out there. It's going to be used for retention, so the site to the south can be utilized for maximum utility for that. And I stand to answer any questions.
Thank you. All right, we have one individual sign up for comments on this one, but I don't see him in the room. Ron Weaver? Just make sure he's hiding behind the... Nope, all right. That's the only person we had sign up in the public comment for this item. So with that, I will turn it over to the Commissioners to see if they have any comments or questions on this item. I'm not seeing any lights, so I will go on ahead and close public comment on this item and open it up to motions from the Commissioners on this item. Commissioner Bernstein?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At this time, I would move that we find Plant City Comprehensive, proposed plan amendment 22-12, consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Comprehensive Plan for Plant City, and that we pass it along to the Plant City Commission with that recommendation.
Thank you, Commissioner Buzzer.
Second?
All right, we have a motion of consistency finding by Commissioner Bernstein, a second to that motion by Commissioner Buzzer. Any more comments or discussion from the Commissioners on this item? Not seeing any, then I'll ask the clerk to go ahead and do a roll call vote on this item.
Bernstein?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Buzzer?
Yes.
Cardenas?
Yes.
Fernandez?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Lauk?
Yes.
Soria?
Yes.
Chair Joseph?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried, nine to zero.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have 2C, PCCPA 22-13, and it's another future land use map amendment, and back to you again, Mr. Hudson.
Again, Mark Hudson, Planning Commission staff. This next plan amendment is also in the northeast portion of Plant City. However, it is south of Interstate 4, where the previous two are north of Interstate 4. It is shown on, as the yellow star on the Plant City's future vision map. More specific, it's located south of South Frontage Road, east of North Wilder Road, north of East Baker Street, which is also used 92, and west of Sun King Road. This shows you the site that has been annexed into the City of Plant City. It's a rather narrow, long parcel. The aerial you can see here, it is located south of a multifamily development and shares a retention area with that. On the other side of Sun King Road, which is to the east, is a very large warehouse that is operated by City Furniture, which had their grand opening just the other week. To the south is lands that are in Plant City and as Residential 4, and to the east, excuse me, to the west is lands in unincorporated Hillsborough County that has a Residential 2 designation, and you'll see that more clearly when I bring those maps up. This is privately initiated, as the other two were. It's coming in at about 5.92 acres. It has a Hillsborough County Residential 1 plan category, and the applicant has requested Residential 4, which currently is the least dense planning category in the municipality. This shows you the land use as it stands today. You see the darker brown colors of the multifamily to the north, the red colors of mixed-use residential commercial, which is part of the city furniture development. To the south, as I noted, is Residence 4 in Plant City, and to the west is unincorporated county Residential 2. And if this was approved, it would have the same land use as that to the south, which is the Residential 4 plan category. So what is the potential development? Currently, it would be allowed to have three dwelling units. It does not meet locational criteria in the county. In the city, it would allow up to 12 dwelling units, and there are potentials for public, semi-public uses up to about 35,000 square feet. However, it doesn't meet locational criteria for that, those uses either, so it's predominantly going from three dwelling units to 12 dwelling units. The applicant is here, and I believe he's just looking, seeking to put one dwelling unit on the site. This is an aerial of the site, showing you that large retention area and the property that is affected by this plan amendment. Sun King Road is to the right of the screen. This shows you looking down this narrow parcel, from the street view of Sun King Road. This shows you the multifamily development to the north. This is the large warehouse and showroom from City Furniture that is on the other side of Sun King Road to the east that just had their grand opening. This is looking north on Sun King Road, towards South Frontage Road and towards the interstate. And this is looking south on Sun King Road towards East Baker Street, US 92. We did review this per the Plant City Conference of Plan. We looked at neighborhood conservation, it's consistency with the Northeast Master Plan. It was an annexation, so we looked at those related policies, growth management, and the provision of public facilities. We felt it was consistent with those objectives and policies, and as before, the complete objectives and policies are in your packet for review. We did note that there are near school capacity for the middle school and the high school, so any development there will have to go through that concurrency process. There is no issues with water and wastewater capacities, and we received no other objections from any other agencies, including the Environmental Protection Commission. With that, we are looking, garner your recommendation this evening at the Planning Commission, and we'll be doing, as the other two plan amendments, having those heard by the Planning Board on the 28th. Again, the hearing date has not been set with the City Commission. With that, Planning Commission staff recommends that PCCPA 22-13 be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Plant City Conference of Plan and afford this recommendation to the City of Plant City. I stand for any questions, and I believe the applicant may have some comments as well.
Thank you. All right, the applicant, please, come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. James Wendell Welsh. I reside at 504 North Franklin Street, Plant City, Florida, and I am the owner of the property there at Sun King Road. I agree fully with Stash's recommendation, and I'm really just here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. All right, we didn't have anyone sign up for the public comment on this item, except for Mr. Welsh. So we will open it up to the Planning Commissioners for comments or questions on this one. Not seeing any lights, any takers? I'll go on ahead and close the public comment on this item and open it up to motions. Yes, Commissioner Soria Fernandez?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to motion to find the proposed future land use designation change for City of Plant City, PCCPA 22-13, consistent with the Plant City Comprehensive Plan and forward this recommendation to the Plant City Commission.
All right, Commissioner Lauk?
Second.
All right, we have a motion of consistency finding by Commissioner Fernandez, a second to that motion by Commissioner Lauk. Is there any more discussion from the Commissioners on this item, comments? Not seeing any at this time. I'll ask the clerk to go ahead and do a roll call vote on this item.
Bernstein?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Buzzer?
Yes.
Cardenas?
Yes.
Fernandez?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Lauk?
Yes.
Soria?
Yes.
Chair Joseph?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried, nine to zero.
Thank you. All right, before we end this meeting, I think Ms. Soria may have some statements to make. A little bird got in my ear and said this may be Mr. Hudson's last time presenting before us, so...
It is. So it's our understanding that after 37 years with the Planning Commission, this is the last public hearing that Mark is going to be at. Mark's been such a valuable member of our team and led, in recent years, the planning for Plant City and Temple Terrace, and just done an amazing job, so I wanted to take a moment and recognize that, so.
I just want to say it's been an honor to present before you and to be part of the Planning Commission for the last 37 years, and also particularly to serve the City of Temple Terrace and Plant City. I was hired 37 years ago to serve those two communities, and they've become very special to me, and I still have presentations, both Temple Terrace City Council and Plant City Commission, so I still have a little bit more to go before it's done.
Thank you, yeah, congratulations, Mark.
Thank you.
All right, so with that, we will move to our final item of business for this Plant City Public Hearing and adjourn the meeting, so meeting adjourned at 6:02 PM. And give me a second here to read us into our Hillsborough County Public Hearing. Welcome, everybody, to the December 12th, 2022 Public Hearing of the Planning Commission on Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan Amendments. We thank you for attending this meeting. Your comments and participation are encouraged. For those attending in person and wishing to speak on any agenda item, please sign the register at the rear of the room and turn off any devices that may be a distraction. To minimize feedback in the audio, all online participants in the meeting will be muted until it is their opportunity to speak. Planning Commissioners should unmute themselves to indicate that they would like to speak. Please be sure to state your name at the beginning of your remarks for the benefit of the clerk. There will be an opportunity for members of the public to provide comments. When your name is called, you will be unmuted when it is your turn to speak. Please wait until the chair calls on you to begin speaking. State your name at the beginning of your comments and adhere to the time limits. If anyone has difficulties or is watching via HTV and would like to provide comments to be included in the record for local government hearing, please email them to planner@plancom.org. That's planner@plancom.org. For those of you who are not familiar with our process, the meeting will be conducted as follows. The agenda item will be introduced. Staff will give their presentation with a 15-minute time limit. The applicant will be given the opportunity to make a presentation with a 15-minute time limit. Following presentations, members of the public may address the Planning Commission when recognized by the chairman. Public comment will be heard for three minutes per person. The applicant will be afforded a three-minute period for rebuttal response. Planning Commissioners will then ask questions. Public comment will be closed. Then upon a motion, a second, and discussion, a vote will be taken. With that, I'd like to ask the clerk to go ahead and call roll, please.
Bernstein?
Here.
Bowden?
Yeah.
Buzzer?
Here.
Cardenas?
Here.
Fernandez?
Here.
Handy?
Chris? Here.
Lauk?
Here.
Soria?
Here.
Orton?
Here.
Rodriguez?
Here.
Chair Joseph?
Here.
Thank you. You have a quorum, sir.
All right. Our first item of business is 2A, HCCPA 22-11, Comprehensive Plan Text Amendment, and the presenter is Diego Guerra.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Diego Guerra, Planning Commission staff. This is a publicly initiated plan amendment, CPA 22-Tech 12, which is the update to the capital improvement section...
Public comment will be closed. Then upon a motion, a second, and discussion, a vote will be taken. With that, I'd like to ask the clerk to go ahead and call roll, please.
Bernstein?
Here.
Bowden?
Here.
Buzzer?
Here.
Cardena?
Here.
Fernandez?
Here.
Handy?
Chris?
Here.
Lauk?
Here.
Saria?
Here.
Orton?
Here.
Rodriguez?
Here.
Chair Joseph?
Here.
Thank you. You have a call, sir.
All right. Our first item of business is 2A, HCCPA 22-11, Comprehensive Plan Text Amendment, and the presenter is Diego Guerra.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Diego Guerra, Planning Commission staff. This is a publicly initiated plan amendment, CPA 22-Tech 12, which is the update to the capital improvement section of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. So the capital improvement section is part of the, is part of the governance chapter of the Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan, as you could see on the graphic to the right. It is part of the fourth and final phase of the major comprehensive plan update. There's only three more, three or four more sections to go. The current context of the adopted section of found in ComPlan includes topics on levels of service, financial feasibility, needed public facilities, and improvements, coordinating capital improvements with land development, policies discussing infrastructure in the coastal hazard area, to inform the public of capital improvement planning, schools, and support of transportation improvements. I also do want to add that the update was, was conducted, was developed collaboratively with county staff, and their input and comments are incorporated into this update. Overall, 10% of the language is new policy language. The remaining 90% of the language is currently adopted, and we just went ahead and updated those existing, that existing language in terms of just modernizing and updating the language. The current, the current section includes a little over 160 goals, objectives, and policies. And we are proposing to cut that down to 61 goals, objectives, and policies in the proposed section update. The reason for that being is due to, again, we did retain the important components of the existing plan. We did also update and modernize these components of the existing language, but also removed a lot of the regulatory language that is no longer needed. Some of the regulatory language is part of some old state mandates that are no longer applicable as well. So the proposed new section, goals and objectives, we have one goal with nine overall objective areas or topic areas. Those topic areas in bold are new or substantially changed topic areas. One and two, I will go on in the next couple slides. Objective six is a new proposed objective series, specific to equitable distribution of capital improvements. So in terms of levels of service update, currently in the plan, there are three categories of level of service for facilities. And they're currently, the current terminology discusses them as category A, B, and C. We are proposing to change those to the following. The adopted levels of service currently known as category A facilities, these are levels of service that must be maintained for concurrency purposes. Currently, the proposed changes are to portable water. We included language on pressure. I'm sorry, that's, should be pressure per square inch, not pound, or no, that's right, pounds per square inch. I'm sorry. And then parks and recreation, we updated the language, or I'm sorry, the levels of service to be consistent with the recently completed and adopted impact fees associated with their impact fee study. For wastewater and solid waste, there is no change to those levels of service. Again, these levels of service are adopted and must be maintained for concurrency purposes. The next level of service currently known as category B facilities, we are proposing to change the terminology to target levels of service. These levels of service do not need to be maintained for concurrency purposes. They are used for planning purposes. They, topic areas include stormwater. We did update that language with the, with the assistance of county staff and added a target level, target flood level of service. And we updated the language to be consistent with the current county development review. The language also speaks to county roads and multimodal language as well. And then the final level of service currently known as category C facilities, again, proposing that terminology and nomenclature to be changed to public schools level of service. There's no change to that level of service. There's no change to that language. That language remains and is there to enforce the interlocal agreement between the county and the school district. In terms of target levels of service, we've added multimodal levels of service, which are target measures in policy and in non-adopted maps, which illustrate vehicular level of service, transit, bicycle, and pedestrian levels of service. The multimodal level of service allows the county to look at existing conditions and plan for future improvements for mobility options, and refers to ratings based on speed, convenience, safety, and safety of the road for various users. In terms of outreach, we began our outreach in early, early August. We started with a newsletter. We also posted on various social media platforms. We established a project page on our website, which allowed, which allowed greater transparency and stakeholder review, in which we posted the language and other reference documents that allowed users to view the language and compare and contrast the adopted with the proposed language as well. We also conducted targeted outreach with various stakeholders, neighborhood associations, and development community as well. In terms of next steps, we, the, sorry, in terms of next steps, the amendment will be presented to the Board of County Commissioners this Thursday, December 15th, and pending their vote, if they choose to decide to transmit for state review, we expect adoption early We did not receive any objections from reviewing agencies, and we did receive comments from the following, from Hillsborough County, EPC, and the TPO. In terms of consistency review, the update is consistent with various goals and objectives found in the current plan. Ladies and gentlemen, this concludes, oh, I'm sorry. Ladies and gentlemen, staff recommends the Planning Commission find Hillsborough County's Comprehensive Plan Amendment 22-Tech 12, consistent with the, with the Conference Plan for unincorporated Hillsborough County, and forward the recommendation to Board of County Commissioners. This concludes my, my presentation. Myself and county staff are available online, should you have any questions.
Thank you. All right. We didn't have anyone sign up, and I'm going to check with Ron Weaver to make sure this wasn't the one that he wanted to talk about. No, okay, thank you. You missed yours, but I'll double check with you anyway. We didn't have anyone sign up for public comment on this one, so I'll turn it over to the commissioners for questions, comments, or discussions. Commissioner Chris? Oh, false alarm. Anyone else not seeing any discussion or question lights? I will go on ahead and close public comment and open it up to motions on this item from the commissioners. Commissioner Buzzer?
I'd like to find that we find HCCPA 22-12, consistent with Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan, and forward this recommendation to the Hillsborough County Board of Commissioners.
All right. We have a motion of consistency finding by Commissioner Buzzer. Is there a second, Commissioner Bernstein?
Second.
All right, a second to that motion by Commissioner Bernstein. Any more discussion or comments from the commissioners on this item? Not seeing any at this time, I'll ask the clerk to go ahead and do a roll call vote.
Bernstein?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Buzzer?
Yes.
Cardena?
Yes.
Fernandez?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Lauk?
Yes.
Saria?
Yes.
Chair Joseph?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried, nine to zero.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have 2B, HCCPA 22-01, and it is a Comprehensive Plan Text Amendment, Commercial Locational Criteria, and the presenter is Melissa Leinhart.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Melissa Leinhart, Planning Commission staff. I'm actually going to turn it over to Pat Tyeski. She's our consultant that has been working on this project with us almost about a year and a half now. So she's going to go ahead and take over, and then I'll finish up with the consistency Good evening. For the record, my name is Pat Tyeski. I'm a principal planner with SNME. I have a short presentation to go through with you today. Some of these slides you have seen before, so I'm going to go through those really quickly, but I'm going to focus on the ones that are more important. So just in general, the CLC, it's a mechanism that we have in Hillsborough County where you can have commercial development within residential land use categories. You don't have to go through a future land use map amendment. You just have to do your rezoning, meet the criteria, and then you can have your commercial development. So we were hired to revisit that, this objective 22 with several issues in mind, but one of them was the relationship between the scale of commercial and the context of the place where they locate. This slide you have seen before, but it's a key slide. So we all know that there is neighborhood, scale, commercial, community, regional. Neighborhood, your coffee shop, convenience store. Community, your typical shopping center with an anchor, typically a grocery store. Regional mall, the super Targets, the Super Walmarts. Now, those different scales of commercial should look very different, whether you're in an urban area, suburban area, or rural area. So that was one of the main principles that we used. For the background, so we needed to know what the vision for the county was, what were the main drivers for future growth. There was a survey that was done last year, and it was a statistically significant survey. 1,300 people were called, and they responded to several questions. And this was just for the unincorporated county, not the cities. Some of the numbers that came out, 91% of the people said that it was very important that we protect the agricultural lands. 80% said that it was important to have retail opportunities nearby. 75% said that it was important to them to have convenient, safe sidewalks and bicycle facilities for them to go to commercial areas. In terms of the comprehensive plan, staff took the time to go through all the policies of the comprehensive plan and pull those that were most relevant to this exercise. The top one that I want to mention is the strip commercial idea, that we need to avoid strip commercial in the county. And the second one was to limit commercial development in the residential land use categories to neighborhood commercial. We can always go back to this later if you want to, but, um, so in terms of the research that we did, we were tasked with three tasks. The first one was to review documents that the county has commissioned, either studies, reports, research, anything that was relevant to this exercise. We created a summary of those documents, and we pulled out anything that was important that we should keep in mind. The one in the middle, we looked at what is everybody else doing in Florida and outside of the state. Very few examples out there where they allow commercial within future land use categories that are for residential. And those few that allow it, they have some criteria in the comprehensive plan, and they have detailed regulations in the Land Development Code. The third task that we were given, when we had a draft that was closer to the final product, to what we were ready to take to a hearing, we selected a few sites in the county and created some 3D graphics to show what it could look like if we applied the standards that we were proposing. And we have those pictures in the background if you're interested to see them later. You know this already, we had two websites going on, interactive websites. We tried all kinds of methods to reach out to the public. We had a bunch of meetings before we got to the first public hearing. And typically, the comments that we were hearing were the context sensitivity. If you're going to put commercial next to me, it needs to be sensitive to what's around it. Protecting the character of the neighborhoods was important. And the last one I want to mention is the community plans. We had a lot of people coming in saying, we don't want this CLC to interfere with whatever the community plans already say. So we came before you back in August 8. It was a Planning Commission public hearing, and a lot of questions came up. And the directive was, go back, meet with the public, you know, make sure you address all these questions, and then let us know, you know, what comes out of that. So staff decided to schedule two additional public meetings, decided to schedule up to 10 briefings with whoever wanted to come from the Planning Commission or the Board of County Commissioners, and to prepare a matrix summarizing all those comments that we heard since the hearing. So the first meeting, actually, community meeting number five, it was just receiving all the input, all the comments, questions. We were just listening to those comments. There was no conversation, there were no answers provided at that meeting. Community number six, community meeting number six, that's when we sat down, went through all the comments, provided responses, had a conversation. We had about 20 to 22 people in each meeting. And then we created the matrix. Now, the matrix has 122 comments, sounds like a lot of comments, but a lot of them are repetitive. What we did was, for every person that provided a comment, they got a line on the table. So you may find five comments that have the same topic. They are all stated in this table. And for each comment that we received, there was a response provided in the matrix. And this one is available for, to the public. So we get to the middle of the project here, the revisions. So since we came last time with this project, there are a bunch of changes that we made that related to clarification. The first one had to do with how do we define the gas station pump? We have a provision that restricts the number of pumps. We wanted to make sure that everybody was in agreement on what that meant. We had input from the county staff too on this. Added some language to specifically state that agricultural uses do not have to comply with the CLC. So feed stores or anything related to agricultural activities, they don't have to provide or to comply to objective 22. The next one, clarifying grandfathering provisions, we're not trying to change any projects that have already been approved, whether they were developed or not. Clarified that node separation measurement. So it is from property line to property line, and it's following a vehicular path. Definition of strip commercial, we mentioned strip commercial, you know, almost every time we present, and people were wondering, what is strip commercial? We have provided a definition, it was not, people were not in agreement with it. So we decided to use the one from the state statutes with some minor modifications. Clarified that RP2 was subject to the requirements, it was taken up for a few iterations. And then we, the compatibility section, we decided to go with the original language. It seemed like it was working. Staff knew exactly how to enforce it, so we decided to do that. In terms of flexibility, we made a lot of changes, making sure that we were keeping the intent the same. So we have maximum development size for each quadrant that has been in the books for many years, but we are opening this up now and saying that for certain land use categories, if you're in the urban service area, not in the rural area, you're going to be able to go up to the FAR, to the floor area ratio. So that's going to be a substantial change. The next one has to do with office uses. We kind of were restricting office uses a little bit too much, so we decided to just treat them like commercial. So same size limitations, same design requirements, so we're going to treat them the same way. In terms of building placement and tenant size limitations, we're going to talk about what the different roadway designations are in a minute, but basically, we're saying that if you're located on a suburban, commercial roadway, those don't apply to you. The next one is the building design standards. This was a little bit difficult because we're dealing with a comprehensive plan, not necessarily a land development code, but they're important. We simplified the language. And then we added a tenant size waiver. I'll get to the tenant size in a minute. So which changes we didn't make because we just could not agree on the requests. The first one was to allow drive-through establishments within the neighborhood commercial areas. The second one was to waive the tenant size and the building design requirements for buildings that are, for sites that are located on suburban residential roadways. And this is going to make a little bit more sense in a little bit. The next one was eliminating the minimum separation between nodes. Again, we have that separation because we don't want to end up with strip commercial. A lot of the intersections are very close together. So if we allow every intersection to become commercial, all of a sudden, we have strip commercial. And the last one, the proposed building location and design standards, many people thought that they would only, they should only apply to, that they would not be appropriate in the suburban areas. And we felt that they are important. They're important for that connectivity and safety for the pedestrians, so we wanted to keep that one. So I want to show you the map, because now all these items that I mentioned are going to start making more sense. So right now, in the comprehensive plan, it refers to the cost affordable map. It's a map that is based on moving cars. So the Planning Commission has been working with the county, and they came up with a new map that is called the context classification map. This is when we put land use and transportation together. So now the roadways are classified based on the area that they go through. So if it is a mostly commercial area and is designed in a suburban manner, it is a suburban commercial roadway. If this roadway goes through subdivisions with their fences and walls, this is a suburban residential roadway. So that's why we felt that this was the best map to tie to the commercial locational criteria. Now, a question came up in terms of, are we going to be reducing the potential intersections? So staff went through So staff went through the exercise of counting the intersections to see if there was going to be a reduction in number of intersection. In reality, it's going to be an increase. We have about three hundred and forty or fifty more intersections that may potentially qualify. And this is the part of the presentation that explains the difference between the suburban residential and the suburban commercial roadways. So in yellow, you see the suburban residential. So when you drive down those roadways, you're going to mostly see residential development. Whenever staff noticed that there was a Home Depot or a 7-Eleven, gas stations, then they looked at those roadways and said, this seems to be a commercial roadway. So they marked them as red on the map. Now, the green shows the rural roadways. So now, this table is also really important because in blue shows what we have in the books today. So today depends on whether you're in two lanes, four lanes, local road, so a lot of different square footages, different distances. So what we're proposing to do is the column that is in yellow, to streamline, simplify. You know, why do we have to go from five to 10,000 to 20,000? Let's just look at one number. And then, when you look at the comparison of the square footages on the yellow column compared to the blue, you'll see that most of the times, we pick the largest number, except for a couple of instances. One was for the industrial area. Now, most of the times, we talk about allowing commercial in residential areas. This also applies to industrial. And people may say, but commercial and industrial, they relate, so they're not going to be offensive, you know, to either one. The idea we're doing this is that we're, the amount of industrial land in the state is disappearing. And if we let it go into commercial or residential, pretty soon, we're not going to have a place to put any of the warehousing, or manufacturing, or job-related uses. So we want to be able to allow some commercial in the industrial areas, but it may be a convenience store, it may be a drugstore, where the workers can walk to and serve their needs. The idea is not to put a target or a super target in the industrial area. So that's why we're going from seventy-five thousand to thirty thousand in the industrial areas. Now, for the agriculture and rural areas, we went, originally, we were proposing forty thousand, the way it shows in the second grouping. Now, if you go to the third grouping, you're going to see that AE agricultural estates, one dwelling unit per two and a half acres, it allows twenty thousand. So why would the one to five, one to ten, one to twenty allow forty thousand? So we decided to, and it was also input from the community, they wanted it limited to twenty thousand square feet. And then when we go to the higher density residential categories, two to six and nine, we see that the numbers are, some are similar to what we have today, but now we're opening the doors to, if you're in the urban service area, forget about that number, use your FAR. So in some cases, it's going to double or more the size that is allowed today. And then for the highest categories, twelve to thirty-five, it's just whatever the FAR allows you. We're not going to be using the hundred and seventy-five thousand square feet anymore. And the next table, it's a very complicated table, you know, when you look at it first time like this, but I just wanted to mention a couple of things. So there is a small footnote in the uses column, the second column. What that footnote says is that the restricted neighborhood commercial, meaning the drive-throughs and the gas stations restriction, the maximum tenant size and the building placement provisions do not apply in the suburban commercial roadways. So if your roadway is commercial already, we're not going to have those limitations. So even though it seems like, you know, it's restrictive, once you consider that this is only going to happen in certain categories, it's not that bad. And this is where the limited commercial would be if you're not in a suburban commercial roadway. Now, building placement, as you can see, that those are the places where it would apply unless you're in the USA. And the maximum gross floor area per tenant, same thing. Now, we are proposing a maximum size per tenant for two of the groupings, the residential two, units per acre, and the residential four through nine. The grocery store can go up to fifty thousand square feet. But again, that little footnote says, if you're in a suburban commercial roadway, that doesn't apply to you. And in terms, and I talked about this before, that for some categories, if you're in the urban service area, then FAR is what applies to you. It's for those two instances. And then I'm going to let Melissa.
Thank you again, Melissa Leinhart, for the record. That brings us to the agency comments. The latest draft language was sent back out to all the agencies listed here on this slide. There were no objections received. And then as far as the consistency review is concerned, the proposed tax amendment was found consistent with the future land use element. Specifically, it's consistent with the neighborhood protection policies under objective sixteen and limiting the uses that help a household meet their daily needs near their home. It's also consistent with policy sixteen point five, which calls for developments of higher intensity to be located on collectors and arterials and to areas outside of established neighborhoods. It is also in keeping with the neighborhood serving commercial uses in these categories at a neighborhood scale is consistent with policy sixteen point one under objective sixteen, as well as community design component goal nine and policy nine dash one point two. The proposed nodal separation will help to retain the character of existing neighborhoods and also allows for non-residential uses to concentrate at intersections. That's consistent with objective four, objective eighteen, and policy eighteen point one having to do with community planning, as well as policies twenty-two point five, twenty-three point two, and then goal eight of the community design component. The site and building design changes are also consistent with several community design component policy direction, including policies nine dash one point four, which emphasizes the creation of commercial design standards that are in a scale and a design that complements the character of the community. And then lastly, the policy language was added to ensure that any rezoning applications proposing commercial uses consider consistency with the community plans as contained in the livable communities element, and that is consistent with objective eighteen and policy eighteen point one of the future land use element. The relatively new goals, objectives, and policies of the mobility section that was adopted this year was also considered, and the proposal was found consistent with the mobility section. Utilizing the context classification map is consistent with mobility section goal seven, objective seven point one, and policy seven point one point one. And those emphasize the importance of providing a multimodal transportation system that supports planned future land use categories. And the proposed changes are designed to support multimodal access, providing choices, safety, connectivity, and support multiple mobility policies, including policy four point one point two, which focuses on pedestrian and bicycle interconnections between adjacent development. Excuse me. That brings us to staff's recommendation. Based on that policy direction, planning commission staff is recommending that the proposed tax amendment, HCCPA twenty-two oh one, be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. And then this next slide talks about our next steps. We are going, the next scheduled meeting is the Board of County Commissioners meeting next month. This was written before the approval of the new schedule, and it has been solidified, that is January twenty-sixth. So we will be going to that Board of County Commissioners meeting for a transmittal of this plan amendment, depending on what happens this evening. And then that will go for state review, and then the adoption hearing will be scheduled subsequently. That is all we have today. Here's some contact information, and Pat and I are here for some questions, if you have any.
All right, thank you. We had a couple people sign up to give comments on this one in the public. I will start off online and like to remind everyone to give your name when you're called on, and remember, three minutes per person. We'll start off with Yvonne Stoker, if she is on the webex.
Am I on?
Go ahead, please.
Okay, this is Yvonne Stoker. I live in the Odessa area, and I attended some of these meetings prior that were mentioned, and I'm not a planner, and I don't really understand all the lingo. But I think my only comment is the section about the waivers. I think that if there's an amendment, if there's a plan that's going to be approved by the planning commission, then why give an option for the county commission to grant waivers to this policy? So that was my only objection to what I've seen written down so far.
All right, thank you. All right, next up, we have, we're going to go into the room now. Actually, let me check online for Josephine Amato. It's Josephine Amato on the line.
Mr. Chair, Josephine did not sign into the meeting.
All right, we'll take it into the room then. First up, we will start with Kami Corbett. All right. Okay, I'll come back to you, all right. You did write maybe on here, so I, all right. Mr. Jasko, Todd Jasko, please.
I'm sorry, Todd Jasko, thirty-eight, thirty-two West Platte Street. I'm here on behalf of NAAP Tampa Bay, which is the region's Commercial Real Estate Trade Association. Unfortunately, I'm here to speak against this amendment, and I, and take no solace in doing that. I think NAAP as an organization really tries to support staff or be supportive of staff if we understand kind of the goals that they're trying to achieve. I can't say that that's the case. I mean, this has been a moving target, to say the least. A lot of the presentation that was just given is new. A lot of the changes have been made since the last workshop. They're coming to you for the first time, we're hearing them for the first time. I didn't, I didn't look, you know, just to read the posting, but that was a criticism, I think, before the last meeting, that let's workshop these things and then bring them to the board so that there's an ample time to give comment and critique. It seems to me, not understanding kind of where this is coming from, that a lot of this is based on unrealistic aspirational goals to take things that may work in the urban core and put them through the entire unincorporated county. Goals like walkability, reducing the size of commercial development that may work in the, in the urban core, just are not one-size-fits-all solutions throughout the county. People like to go to a drive-through coffee shop or a drive-through restaurant, and that's not incompatible with living in a neighborhood. If you're not having those things in your neighborhood, you're just going to drive further to go to them, and that's contrary to what we're trying to figure out here. So respectfully, would ask you to, I guess, lay these on the table, at least until the future land use element is updated, so that two can be considered together, or quite frankly, just lay this on the table indefinitely and stick to the, the old planning rules. So thank you for your, your time and your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Jasko. Jasko, sorry. I was just saying thank you.
Oh.
All right, next up, we have Elise Batzel.
Turn your mic off. I'm Ron Weaver, four oh one East Jackson Street. Is that better for the microphone? Thank you very much for letting me say something about these standards. I stood here about two months ago, and we met within three weeks with staff and relayed the comments that I'm going to share with you. The staff seems to have taken at least a third of them into account, and that's better than none. But the other two-thirds of these changes go to life and death of those who are going to get retail where there are now food deserts, and more importantly, candidly, there are baby doctor and every other kind of office and retail deserts out there, not just food deserts in suburban and rural Hillsborough County. The existing rules have worked for thirty-five years. These new rules are, with all due respect, the two-thirds of the things that they have respectfully not changed, although they made some changes, and I want to give them credit. They're very good professional people, and I admire them very much personally and professionally. But the bottom line is this, the drive-throughs issue is much more urgent than you can imagine because sometimes that's all you're going to get in some neighborhoods. If you ride on three oh one to Jacksonville, you ride along for five miles, and then you finally see something, oh my gosh, there's finally food in that part of three oh one between here and Jacksonville. And nine out of ten times, it's drive-through because that's the only thing that would work economically in that part of that five miles of three oh one between here and Jacksonville. That's also true of this county, the size of Rhode Island. There'll be places where that's the only kind of food and other stuff you can get. The same is true of baby doctors as it is of food deserts. When you've got a, or your lawyer, the lawyer that can help a spouse get a restraining order when she's being abused, that, the CPA who can save you in a tax audit, these are real offices, these are real needs, and putting these needs at a disadvantage where some or the other, they have to be in some complicated set of standards, Simon Says or whatever, with respect to the location, for example, of office. Now, to staff's credit, they, they added a little bit to office in one quadrant. It needs to be in three or four out of four quadrants. If you need baby doctors and lawyers to save you when your spouse is abusing you with respect to restraining order, you need offices in three or four of the quadrants, not one token quadrant. You don't need to say office only if it's a buffer between retail and residential, because what if there's no residential there yet, except for a mile or two away where we have all those thousands of baby doctor needs and your CPA for the audit and all those other needs that arise nearby. Number three, parking in the back. I don't know about you, but I'm not comfortable parking in the back at certain hours with certain kind of stores. It's not safe, it's not well-aligned, it creates problems with respect to risk of people getting hurt in the back of the store between the circulation and the parking. It's idealistic, it's academic, and I commend it for its idealism, I commend it for its academicism, I commend it for its urbanism, but half this county is not ready for five or fifteen years to have everything be by some walkable standard, to preclude drive-throughs, and to make you always park in the back as if you're in the urban center of the world, with all due respect, is not fair to the urgent needs for retail in the most urgent-needed parts of Hillsborough County. Please put it off, and let's figure out what really would work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Ms. Batzel?
Mr. Chair. Sorry, apologies.
Who was that? Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, that was communications, apologies.
No problem.
Um, Elise Batzel, four oh one East Jackson Street. First, I'd like to let you know I'm not here on behalf of any client, I'm actually here as a representative of someone who has worked with developers and in the land use community for twenty-six years in our community. And I look at this, I've thought about this a lot, and I've wondered, why is it that we keep making changes and this keeps coming back? And this is a great example of why we have lost the forest for the trees. And let me explain what I mean. There isn't really any data or analysis to determine if we have too little or too much commercial in our community, right? We're operating under the assumption, because a certain Board of County, a certain county commissioner that's no longer with us made this a champion issue, and that's how this ball got started. But how can we possibly make these changes about commercial locational criteria if we don't even know if we have enough commercial for the population growth that we're incurring? I think that's fundamental to our understanding of what we do here today. The second thing, I think this is premature, because you do have these huge land development changes coming in. How do we know that what is being proposed, and they have put so much work into the proposal, and I commend that, but how do we know that these changes that are being recommended tonight will actually gel with all of the other changes that you're going to study and come back with this comprehensive plan to review? So I, I think we have to take a step back and look at the big picture. If you look at all the comments and all of the little minutia that everybody doesn't agree on, it presumes that there is, there isn't a need for more commercial in our community, that we don't need to accommodate all of these people that are moving into our community. Where are they going to get gas? Where are they going to buy groceries? Where are they, I mean, there are many areas where this is becoming more restrictive. And finally, I think that idea of restricting things in our community in certain areas flies in the face of the bigger goals and objectives that we talk about all the time. And those objections are living and working and playing in the same community. Everybody talks about traffic all the time, right? If we make people get on the road to go to more and more services so they have to leave their community, that flies in the face of those overarching goals that I think are a huge, important part of all of the other provisions of the comprehensive plan. So I would ask you to vote no, or at least indefinitely delay this until you bring the whole comprehensive plan changes back so that everything can be looked at together in totality. Thank you for your, for your time.
Thank you. All right. Next up, last but not least, back to you, Ms. Corbett.
Kami Corbett with the law firm of Hill Ward and Henderson. I'll be brief, I didn't want to, I don't want to be repetitive. I'm in wholehearted agreement with all of the comments that you've heard this evening with respect to this amendment. Unfortunately, we're not able Unfortunately, we're not able to support staff this evening. We're in a similar posture that we were last time when we came before you. There've been a lot of listening, a lot of recording of comments, but not necessarily a lot of change in philosophy or to address the fundamental concerns that have been raised by the commercial real estate community. I too am here, not representing any particular client. There is absolutely no support in the development community for this planned amendment, and unfortunately, we're not able to support it. We won't support it here, and we won't support it at the board. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. That's all we had sign up in the public comments, so now we will bring it back to the applicant for a response.
Thank you. If I'm allowed, I'd like to clarify a few things.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for that. Again, for the record, Melissa Leinhart, Planning Commission staff. I believe Mr. Weaver was mentioning something about office only being allowed at one quadrant. With this new proposed language, as Pat mentioned in her presentation, we have opened that up to all four intersections for consideration. So the, the updated draft language does reflect that. And then the second item about this being in a, a request championed by a former board member. This effort was undertaken as staff's choice, just based on the overall comprehensive plan update and knowing that this is such a useful and valuable tool in the future land use element. My team and I utilize the current CLC provisions every single day that we work, anyway, not on Saturdays and Sundays. But we recognize the importance of it, and we see from a day-to-day how it really does need an update. For instance, there are intersections right now that are limited to 5,000 square feet. Right now, Simmons Loop, for instance, is classified as a major local roadway, and it's limited to 5,000 square feet. So the intersection of 301 and Simmons Loop, I'm just thinking of a recent example of something that I can kind of throw at you. And, and we recognize that that roadway has really changed, and that this map that's currently used is outdated, and it doesn't reflect current real-time situations. It also doesn't reflect, as Pat was mentioning, the, the union really that we're trying to move toward is the, the, the land use and transportation, trying to make sure that they complement one another, and we're not operating in a vacuum, looking at transportation in one angle and land use in another. Trying to really marry those items, and that's what the context classification map does. So those are two things that I would like to clarify, but of course, we're here for any kind of questions.
All right. Thank you very much. Now with that, I will turn it over to the commissioners for questions, comments, and discussions on this item. Let's see, Commissioner Fernandez moving.
Yeah, I got a few issues going on here, so. If you're trying to move businesses towards intersections, how in any way does that help pedestrian traffic? If you're going to send them right to a major intersection, you know, if we're promoting commercial uses at a major intersection, I, I know, because, you know, I've spent years without a car. And I'd love to be able to just walk to a convenience store or a neighborhood market without having to go all the way to Fowler and 56th Street where everything's concentrated. So I just don't, it sort of contradicts itself that we're, we're trying to jam everything into intersections and not have sort of strip malls and things like that, as you mentioned them. And I would like to see those three models, by the way, that we, you offered to earlier. I just, it, it sounds like you're trying to put everything in an intersection, and intersections are biggest problems transportation-wise. Bus stops are not at intersections. They're 700 feet down the street. So it's, it just really isn't making a good environment for pedestrians in this whole mobility section. I'm reading some of these, and it just doesn't make sense from what I heard in the presentation.
That's my fault. I apologize. That's a good question. Did you want to take that? I feel like you came up, you probably had something valuable to say.
Just, uh, just two, two reminders. One is that what we're proposing tonight is not a new concept. It has been in the books for 30 years or more. The idea is to concentrate commercial in nodes, not necessarily at the intersection. Like, all the development doesn't have to be at the corner. The distances that are mentioned in the, in the draft talk about how far from the corner you can go. So the idea is to prevent these roadways from becoming commercial, 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 all the way down. Like, it has to be stopped somewhere, and we have distances that go from 660 feet to 1,000 feet. So your restaurant, the convenience store, it doesn't have to be at the corner. It could be 1,000 feet away from the corner, and it would still qualify for this.
Okay, so but over time, wouldn't you expect then we're going to need a higher FARs at those intersections?
Yes.
Okay. And another thing I had.
Yeah.
Excuse me, may I have the speaker state her name for the record, please?
Sorry, Patricia Tayewski.
Thank you.
Okay, so another thing I had, you sort of said when you were identifying the type of roadways, you were just looking to see if there was a Home Depot or something in there. I, I know there's a million better ways to do that. You should, you know, you have a GIS map up there. This should be used, if you, and you have nodes, you should be using a network analyst to determine that, just not be pointing at a map and saying, oh, this one, I feel like it's commercial residential. What happens when it's split? If there's residential on one side, commercial on the other, but there, there should be a much more mathematical way to determine it.
That map was not something that we did as part of this. This map is part of an overall mobility element, part of the comprehensive plan. And it's not just, oh, there's a Home Depot. There has to be commercial here. No, it's more like the character of that segment of that roadway. So like, looked at a roadway from intersection to intersection, is this more like, is it going to be a commercial roadway? Or is it a predominantly residential roadway? And I'm sure staff can speak more about that.
Sure, I can clarify that, too. That, the context classification map was a large effort with Hillsborough County staff, so community and infrastructure planning, as well as development services and planning commission staff. It is a map that is adopted as part of our mobility section. But it was a very large effort. I, I'm not sure of all the methodology that went into it, because I was not part of the creation of the map. But it, it is already adopted as part of the comprehensive plan. And when the consultant and also planning commission staff looked at this effort from the beginning, we looked at what are the kind of maps we could use for guidance? You know, currently, you know, we have a, a very outdated map that we use, the cost affordable map, where roadways aren't, are shown on the map, aren't constructed today necessarily. We looked at the functional classification map, and that really just takes into consideration, are you an arterial? Are you a collector? So we were looking to, for a map that existed, that we didn't have to recreate as part of this effort. And this is a recent map, and it also will be regularly updated as well, so those corridors will be looked at. So if there's some sort of evolution, some major changes, those will be reflected on the map as well. But it isn't just if there was a store. It, it wasn't that simple, believe me. I think that the, the people that worked on it, if they're listening right now, they're probably, you know, thinking that they need to clarify some things, and they're not here.
Melissa, if I could, could you show again the context classification map? The map that, that Connor and Andrea worked on? Because, because I do think it's important to, to see the number of increased locations, to your point about what is currently allowed, really does focus, because it's based on the cost affordable transportation map, it's very focused on some of the major roadways, two-lane and four-lane. And what the context classification map, it, it increases the number of intersections where this can be considered considerably to allow more of those neighborhood scale nodes. All of those yellow dots are new ones. And so I, I think that we're, this is moving it more towards what you were talking about, Commissioner Fernandez, to not have it be all on the major road where it's probably not a great walking environment, you know, along 41 to use a road in this map. But to allow for some of those neighborhood scale uses in more in the neighborhoods.
Yeah, I do appreciate that and recognize that. It's, I just don't think people, I, I think people who drive cars mean this, is how it feels. I was down, I was mentioning earlier in Wyom, and I missed a turn, and it took me two miles to make a U-turn. Right? So we, we're sort of, we're, we're setting up the situation where the traffic seems to be getting worse. I do understand we're trying to increase commercial opportunities at, at these nodes and these areas. I just don't, I just have a problem with sort of the way we're identifying areas from the nodes. That's, that's really my issue with it.
Can I add something else to that? I don't disagree. So if you look at this, this zoom in is actually a pretty good case study. Like Ruskin on the west side of I-75 has much greater roadway connectivity. So it's got a lot more opportunities than Sun City Center on the, on the east side. That's partly by, by how they've developed and how the roads interconnect with each other in those different areas. So it does make it harder when you've got an area like Sun City Center, they have to drive out to 674 to access some of those commercial uses. Whereas in Ruskin, they've at least got the opportunity to perhaps have them in a more close proximity, something that potentially is walk or bikeable. So it does go hand in hand with how the development pattern occurs. We've, over the years, heard quite a bit of feedback at, not only, you know, through our planning processes, but through rezoning hearings and things of the like about how people are concerned about the compatibility of these uses too close to their neighborhoods. So it, it's a balance between, between both.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Kress?
I'll just make a couple of quick observations. I appreciated when you came in August, and it seemed like there was still some kind of compromising and listening to do with the community, and it sounds like you went back and you did that, and you actually made some changes from it. I remember when IKEA was coming to Tampa, right? Such a win. And there was a city, Tampa City Council member who asked them if they would put the building at the, at Adamo Drive, State Route 60, and the parking behind, and they said, nope, because the city doesn't require us to do that, so we're not going to. So to me, this seems like pretty solid planning principles that you're trying to put in place. I think we deserve better than ugly strip malls everywhere. I do think retail can adapt, and I think the walkable environment that you're trying to create makes a lot of sense, kind of just marrying that transportation and, and land use together. So I'm, I'm supportive from what I've seen. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kress. Any more comments? Oh, sorry, Commissioner Bernstein, yes, please.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. If, if I could direct this question maybe to you both, because there are some comments offered earlier, and there are certain themes that emerged, I think, in some of those comments, and in fairness, we've heard some of them before. I, I've often personally thought that when it comes to planning, transportation, other issues, the old expression, perfection is the enemy of the good, is out there. But you can go too far with that as well, and I, I just wanted you to, if you don't mind, maybe respond to a, a couple of threads of comments that I heard that really fell into two categories. First, this notion that we're, we're at risk perhaps of putting the cart before the horse to the extent that we create this massive undertaking, which may then have to be, for lack, lack of better word, shoehorned into whatever may be coming down the, the pike in terms of future land use element changes and comprehensive plan changes. And so maybe if you could address those concerns from your perspective in terms of what that might look like, and, and what is the downside, in fairness, of kicking this can down the road? Especially since the, the other thread I heard was this notion that a lot of change was injected into the proposals at each stage, I think, first August and November, if I heard right. And still, a lot of comments ultimately were not adopted, maybe rightly so, but this, this, have we, have we baked the cake fully yet, I guess, is this other question I might put to you.
Great questions. Thank you. For the, the first question, I would say the, we, this is, this is a big discussion piece with staff. When we do the future land use element update, which is coming to you all last, it's sort of batting cleanup because it is such a valuable, important section of the comprehensive plan, and it includes a lot of different topic areas. So, you know, mobility talks about multimodal systems and things like that, but future land use element, I mean, it has everything from soup to nuts. Timing of growth, mixed use requirements, site and urban, you know, building design. It, it has a lot of different components, community plans. So, so what we were trying to do with this effort was really give the commercial locational criteria its due time and give it its own outreach, its own specific. Our point of view was that if we folded it into the larger update, it would likely get lost because there are so many topic areas in the future land use element. You may have noticed, we've, we kind of honed in on a couple of topic areas and separated them aside. There's transfer of development rights going on, the, the effort with RP2 and WVR2, those were separated out from the future land use element. This as well, and, and really it is for that reason. It, it, that's a, that's a choice that you all can make. But we have spent about 18 months on this so far, and we've had six outreach meetings, which is a, is a pretty big number of outreach meetings for one study. We've had stakeholder meetings and, and just other outreach besides that, which is all in the PowerPoint in your backup. But to your second point, the last two community meetings, community meeting five and six, five was a listening exercise, and six was, okay, based on what we heard at community meeting number five and at the August 8th Planning Commission meeting, here are the changes that we feel like we can make that are not going to compromise Objective 22, which is really why we're here today. So those are all explained. I think the, you know, having us go back was valuable with the two community meetings. This matrix that was produced and is also in your backup, that it's very transparent. It has everybody's comment. It has their name who made them. Were we able to accommodate it? And if not, why not? So based on all of that, I am very confident with the product that is moving forward today. I will say, in addition, you know, my team reviews, consistency reviews for plan amendments and rezonings on a daily basis for all of the unincorporated county jurisdiction. Based on your feedback, I was really racking my brain and thinking, okay, well, we only have so much that we can use the consultant for. What can we do as staff, in addition to our regular jobs, for this study to help convince the planning commissioners and then eventually, hopefully, the board how this could work? And, and we came up with this idea that's on the, the screen today. Connor is here from the TPO staff. He was amazingly cooperative and very generous with his time. He worked with Andrea Papendrew, who's my co-manager of this project, and they analyzed every intersection on this map and said, okay, what's qualifying today based on 2040? What would be qualifying as if we adopted this context classification map? Where do they overlap? Are we, I mean, I didn't know the results. We could have come here with a net decrease. I would have still showed that to you, but we ended up showing and demonstrating that we are 345 net increase intersections. I think that's a pretty telling story. And then also, in addition, using this map with the combination of land use and transportation, that is headed in the right direction, especially from an overall comprehensive plan view. That is where we're headed with all of these sections in the update. Hopefully, that was answered to you. Long-winded. Thank you.
Was that it? You good? Okay. Yes.
Uh, yeah, I guess I'd like to make a little bit of a comment, just because, you know, with what we do, we make a lot of decisions on, on different topics, and usually it's something very specific that somebody's requesting or something a little bit more detailed. And if anything, at the end of the day, I think a lot of the times, everybody's on the periphery, everybody's on the outside. Well, we've got something being presented to us from people on the inside. Our planners that daily review these things, go through these things, and they're seeing what works and what doesn't work, and where those corners are, you know, those angles of, of things that are just not fitting. You know, they're consistently doing their best at what I think they're, in, in doing their job. And there's no motivation behind it. They're, they're not getting paid. They're not going to get paid anymore. They're not going to get paid any less, whether or not this goes through. All that it's going to do from their perspective is help our community. So I think that's something that we should really consider in the time and efforts that they've put into this. Because when you take something and you have a free market and you put a structure to it, well, nobody in that free, in that free market is going to be happy about that structure. And that, that's kind of what they're searching for, is to add a little bit of structure, so you have a little bit of continuing continuity in it.
Thank you, Commissioner Laub.
Forgive me, I can be a simpleton sometimes. So if we could just simplify it a little bit, with the location criteria, which is effectively concentrating commercial development, how is that going to increase walkability? If we're concentrating commercial nodes, how does that increase walkability?
Well, those nodes will be connected to one another, ideally with sidewalks and other multimodal transportation systems. These, some of these roadways are serviced by transit as well. We do have increased walkability language that we folded into this as well, talking about the importance of pedestrian connectivity, which is only emphasized more by the multimodal language that we have that was adopted as part of the new, the newly adopted mobility section.
At its root, this increases the geography between commercial developments, yes?
Well, the nodal separation will separate them, yes, so that, so there will not be, ideally, a roadway would not be stripped out with commercial. So there will not be, ideally, a roadway would not be stripped out with commercial from beginning to end. There would be other uses that would fill in or mixed use development patterns, that type of thing.
So if we have commercial developments, they're engineered to be further apart. I just am having a difficult time understanding how that's going to drive more walkability in rural Hillsborough County. The second thing I would ask is, can you give some examples in rural Hillsborough County where we're trying to derive walkability measures? So if I think about Lutz or Odessa or outside plant city, you know, these don't strike me as areas that are designed for walkability measures.
Right.
So you're not going to walk three, four miles to a commercial intersection, right? So talk me through, if you would please, how walkability plays into areas like this.
That is more concentrated in the urban service area. The rural area has different requirements based on that. No, and the nodal separation is two miles in the rural area. So that is inherently not walkable.
Okay.
I would agree with that. And we've recognized that from the beginning. Did you have something else to say?
There is a table that talks about the separation of nodes. And the most restrictive is rural, it's two miles. And then the next level is one mile. But then when you're in the suburban commercial roadways, the very urban areas, there is no separation requirement. So it's not like a blanket statement for all of them. And also, in terms of walkability, I don't know if you remember one of the slides that we showed previously, the example where you have a subdivision and a shopping center right outside the subdivision, but they're not connected. You force the person to walk like they are a car, go out the driveways. And we have some provisions here that would require new subdivisions, not existing, but new subdivisions to connect or to provide future connections, not necessarily vehicular, but maybe for bicycles or pedestrians to these nodes. So we're trying to set it up for future connectivity and making it more walkable for people who live around these nodes.
Okay, thank you for that. At the August meeting, there was extensive conversation around the limiting of privately-initiated plan amendments. And I haven't heard that discussed much tonight. So the plan, the last time when we discussed in August, there was concern from the development community that as written, it would limit the ability to even consider privately-initiated amendments in some cases. What do we do with the current iteration?
I think what we were just trying to say is the commercial locational criteria was put in place pre-2008 update so that people did not have to go and initiate a privately-initiated plan amendment, and they could by right ask for non-residential uses in residential plan categories. That is still the case today. And I also wanted to point out with this chart, because I feel like this conversation gets a little muddled because it's very confusing.
Yes.
There's a lot of moving parts. But that there are several future land use categories where commercial locational criteria does not apply today, as in there are rules about FAR and other rules. But you could have a full range of commercial uses in areas based on, you know, how intense the future land use classification is. So what we're really talking about here, and this chart does a really good job of outlining it, the limit in uses would really apply to the residential plan categories. And then, like for instance, the tenant restriction, that only applies to five land use categories. So when we make blanket statements about, you know, we would have tenant size or that would limit us, it's really only in RP2, residential 2, residential 4, residential 6, and residential 9, five.
And what percentage of the parcels in the areas that are impacted are those?
I have a slide on that. It's a perfect segue. It just might be a bit of a hold on, there's a little animation here to get there. See how far back? Oh. Is there not in the slideshow? There only is, it's only a... We just had a little bit of, we save them as a slideshow, and when you do it like that, the hidden slides are gone. It's not a full PowerPoint show. So can we pause that and maybe handle other questions if possible? And we'll get back to the, we have a pie chart that shows all the future land use categories and what percentage they are within all of the rest of them. So.
All right.
There's still, there's probably a few of us that could talk out of it. I don't want to jump over you, Commissioner Fernandez. You go ahead first.
Thank you. I would like to state that the parking in the back actually has been fantastic. Accessing the developments through the subdivisions, that's all great. We have one in Temple Terrace that's being built right on 56th Street. It's a big hit. They're all sold out. But, you know, I'm thinking about this, just countywide, this being unincorporated Hillsborough County, and I'm thinking around the county, you know, we have Dale Mabry, Brandon Boulevard. All these seem to be pretty popular and pretty full. They have, you know, tenants and all those. And I don't know what the exact, you know, why we're against strip commercials so much, if it's so successful in other parts of the county, where, you know, that's nonstop businesses along South Dale Mabry, like I just mentioned, Brandon, Nebraska, look with Seminole Heights now, you know, it's got connecting businesses all up and down. And the city of Tampa, Commission U.S. have to do a study, why is everything going out of business in New Tampa? And when I think about it, they're not connected. They're separated by far nodes. You know, there were things going out of business left and right, and, you know, the mayor wanted to know, why is everything going out of business up there? Is there a connectivity problem? Is it what type of businesses they are? And it was amazing, it was just, I think, 50% vacancy at some point about two years ago. And so I think of that and think of, you know, at that same time, was there other sections of the city or county that were, you know, losing tenants drastically because of, you know, connectivity anyway? So I just, I'm not sure this is going to work the way we think when we're trying to plan all these other aspects of mobility and the land uses that we vote on. So there's just more comments while we're waiting.
Sure. The nodes in the more, I would say, more suburban and urbanized areas get down to about a half a mile. So when you have a node and a node, and then you have a half mile in between, that's, it's not a great distance. It's not the two miles that we talked about for the rural area. That certainly is a greater separation. Not sure if you have anything to add from?
If I could, I would just add that some of the roads that you just described, they're not in residential land use categories. So it's kind of hard to see the map that's on the wall over there. But all the areas that are red or purple, those are commercial and mixed use land use categories, and these locational criteria don't apply for the most part in those. This applies only in the residential land use category. So if you, oh, look, somebody, oh, HTV, you're so good to me. Thank you. Wow. That's impressive. So those areas, you know, along the State Road 60s, Hillsborough Avenue, Dale Mabry, these criteria are not going to apply. And so this applies in those peach, those yellow areas that are, you know, the Bloomingdales, the Cara Woods, the areas where it's mostly residential. So one of the things that's distinct, just to use an example from last month's hearing, I think it was last month. Yeah. Last month, we had that site on West Shore that wanted to do a coffee shop. And they were in a residential land use category in the city of Tampa, and they had to do a plan amendment. In the unincorporated county, they could be considered, if they were at one of these intersections, for that coffee shop. So the, and not have to do a comp plan amendment. So there's already a greater amount of flexibility in the county's residential land use categories than there is, for example, in the city. So I think that's important to, it's allowing it to go into more places than in the city.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I absolutely agree. And I'm not saying all this is bad. I do really appreciate that part. But that's sort of what I'm thinking, is we have, when we see these properties out in those way out, you know, all yellow areas, eventually, we're going to see it come to the commission maybe, right, where we have new land use changes. Well, now maybe, you know, I just fear that now we're just isolating them when they will be built one day on those intersections only. That's sort of how I'm getting at this. But I do appreciate a lot of what's gone in here. It's just that's, I think the location part is more of my thing, you know?
Can we get the image?
And that was the root of my question. So that coffee shop.
Seven makes.
Yep. That coffee shop is a very good example. So with this particular text amendment, in some cases, the developer couldn't even bring that forward. So there wouldn't be any privately-initiated options to do that. And that's my objection.
Say that again, I want to...
So the coffee shops are a really good example with the way that we're setting up the nodes and where and when you can develop. And the limitations that were described are, and a bevy of our properties, right, the four or five ours. So as they exist today, and you're a developer, you want to come into an intersection that you think makes sense, that you think services the community around you, that you think you can develop it for a reasonable price, you're unable to do that with the way this text amendment is proposed if it's in one of those current residential things. So it does limit the development.
Well, I would say today, there are less intersections that meet this criteria. This criteria exists in my view, of course, my view is going to be different than what the development community presented, but in my view, it exists in a more restrictive standpoint, from the standpoint of there are now more places that are going to qualify.
Right. So that's a good point. And that's, I'm trying to balance this with the feedback from the development community. And if it's, if we're contending that it expands the development opportunities for not only the developers, but for the people it services in those communities, why are we getting such pushback from the development community telling us it's restricting development?
Well, I don't want to speak for them. They can do that, they can speak. But some of the issues that I heard were related, not necessarily to the intersections that are qualifying, but related to some of the more specific standards, like the building design being located to the front of the street, the tenant restriction of 20,000 square feet per individual tenant, things of those nature were what I heard.
But yeah, we had multiple iterations of this. The last time, we heard that very clearly, that it was restrictive. This time, it was more about some of the specific restrictions. But it's been a theme.
Yeah. The gas stations, the drive-throughs, I don't disagree with them, that there are some places where those would be allowed today, that we're now saying that shouldn't be allowed in such close proximity to some of those suburban residential, lower-density residential neighborhoods, because it's not as compatible. And I'll tell you, over my 22-some years here, there've been a lot of rezonings where that's exactly what the neighbors have come out saying, we don't want, we don't want the gas station and the drive-through because they have a lot of high trip generation, they have a lot of noise. So they're the most common things that get restricted out of commercial development in close proximity to residential. That's why we propose that, because, you know, one of my goals was for this to be more transparent and less everyone has to negotiate it every time.
Can I make a comment? Pat Tajewski again. I think another conversation that we heard last time in terms of restrictions was that if you have an intersection, and for some reason, it just doesn't meet these criteria, what are your options? So we're saying, well, you can get a future land use map amendment. Well, in Hillsborough County, in order to get a future land use map amendment approved, you need to have supermajority, I guess it is what it is. So it's not as easy in other communities. So I think that's another consideration, that, you know, it's not part of what we're doing, it's just the way things are done in Hillsborough County. And we found the graphic that shows the percentage per land use category of total acreage and developable acreage left. So which categories were we looking at? I think you mentioned the R2s.
Yes.
We have 0.9% of the developable lands in the county, about 1,300 acres, are left in the R2 category.
And like 3.3 in residential 4. RP2, 2.92%, residential 9.44%. And then what was the other, the last one? Residential 6, 1.6%. So those are the five that I mentioned before. So we have it by developable acreage, and then the slide before, and I can flip right back to it, that's the total acreage of each future land use category broken down. That's the total. And then, and flip down here to the developable. Very big. Oh, come on. I don't know what is happening. They're hidden, it may still be hidden. Okay. Just unhide it. Okay. But we had a very long presentation, so we needed to kind of focus, and we had some extra ones in case we had questions.
Can I answer your question, Commissioner Laub? Yeah, all right. Commissioner Fernandez?
Yeah, I'm just, the R1 is not considered in this, is it?
No, that's considered a rural category.
Yeah, okay. All right. I was just going to say, is it just a huge percentage of potential land use changes in the future? And that's sort of what I'm worried about, that's all. Thank you.
Which is why it's available, because it's, most of that is in the rural area, excuse me.
Commissioner Buzzard?
Well, I wanted to kind of, I've been reading, I read the entire package, and I've been thinking about the comments. And I think everyone's been in their neighborhoods long enough, they know that arterial and feeder roads change over time, so developed traffic pattern will change, and then the need for neighborhood commercial will change. How does this help that? Or does this, this seems to limit that because the separation is going to be an issue, right?
So that is one of the waivers that's available for nodal separation. We recognize existing conditions, existing entitlements, site constraints. I mean, that's one of the things that we allowed some flexibility on. And I think that would be, you know, the burden would be on the applicant to explain that situation. But I think that can be easily done in a narrative or a request as part of a rezoning. Hey, I'm not right at the intersection, but listen, this land is great, they're missing a grocery store, you know, that kind of thing, or they don't have goods and services near their home. I think that those are compelling things that you could add as part of that request. And again, that's why we added that as a waiver option.
All right. Any more comments or questions from the commissioner? For my own part, I tend to probably agree with Commissioner Kress. I think you all have done a good amount of work on this. I don't agree with everything in there. I have a lot of the same comments that some of the people presented here today in the public comments section. But what we're called here to do is find consistency or inconsistency with the comprehensive plan. We have elected officials who we then send our recommendation, not final decision, our recommendation to, and those elected officials can start to met out the little details of gas pumps, or where they want this, or where they want that. But as for a set of discussable topics, debatable topics to put in front of our elected officials, I think this is it. And I think that's demonstrated by the discussions we had in here tonight. I would like to see everybody who showed up in public comments show up to talk to the elected officials the same way you did here, because I think that's where those decisions need to be made. We don't have those kinds of powers. For us, it's a baby with the bathwater thing, either it's in or it's out. And for me, I think it needs to go to the elected officials, because as we've heard here tonight, these issues are really, you know, really sensitive, really highly charged. So this seems like the perfect thing to set in front of them and say, here, make a decision on it. So that's my two cents. And I do agree with Commissioner Kress. You have my support on putting it forward. It's my two cents. Any more guests? Commissioner Fernandez?
I want to say, I do agree with you. I do have the support of this. But I wanted to make sure that that's a big issue to me, is the connectivity thing, the mobility part. But I do think there's a lot of good things in there. I agree with the drive-through, I mentioned the parking in the back. All those things are great, but, you know, there's just seemed to be a large section I think needs to be really thought through.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Bernstein?
Yeah, and I would just add that, you know, there's always an element of idealism in what we do, and that came up on both sides. But I think it's also kind of a cautionary tale in a way, because...
in a way, because, you know, idealism has its place, but when we're still visualizing where the sidewalks might go and where they might not, it just illustrates to me how much thought still needs to go into this. And hopefully, you know, our commissioners are up to that task when it passes here, because I agree with our chairman, there's still work to be done potentially on this one.
Thank you, Commissioner Bernstein. Any more comments from the commissioners? Questions? Nope? All right, then I will go on ahead and close public comment on this item and open it up to motions from the commissioners on this item. Anyone? Commissioner Soria?
I would like to carry the motion for HCCPA 22-01, Commercial Location Text Amendment.
All right, we have a motion of consistency finding by Commissioner Soria.
Second.
I saw, I'm going to give it to Commissioner Bowden, he's new. Calm down there, calm down. Commissioner Bowden, you have something to say, sir?
I suck at that motion.
All right. We have a second to that consistency finding by Commissioner Bowden, a consistency finding by Commissioner Soria. Any more comments from the commissioners, or statements? Anybody want to say anything? Nope? All right, then I will turn it over to the clerk to do a roll call vote on this item.
Bernstein?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Buzzard?
Yes.
Cardena?
Yes.
Fernandez?
Yes.
Kress?
Yes.
Lauk?
No.
Soria?
Yes.
Chair Joseph?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried 8 to 1. Commissioner Lauk voted no.
All right, thank you. That was our last item of business. So meeting adjourned at 7:27. Everybody have a good night. Meeting adjourned.